My PowerPoint is my, yeah. Because my memory isn't very good and I don't have any notes. Yeah, three, four bullet points in them. That'd be good.
But it really isn't.
We just haven't happened.
No, we can do it. We can do it in Microsoft Word for Apple.
All right.
Hi Grace, how you doing?
Hi, good, how are you?
Great, huh?
We're still on, aren't we?
Yeah, okay. People like, people coming to us for our presentation.
Well, you know, I'm just helping. I need the work as in.
Great, how are you? Healthy stuff.
I know. I'll be going all the same time as the presentations.
Yeah. Yeah.
Because my workshop takes place at the same time as the mentoring. What are the mentoring?
Well, what am I gonna do?
I'll tell you about it. It's a nineteen-page workbook we put together. You get the chance to have private.
No, but I meant our Christmas.
Our workshop. But the mentoring, the mentoring show is the most.
Why, we'll go there.
You can do it.
Are you? You know that.
No comment.
You missed you.
Uh, since ninety-nine.
Oh, okay.
Very valuable.
Here now.
Yeah.
I've been through the dean of the university.
We brought your laptop.
I wouldn't believe it.
Is that using an iPad?
I went on a trip and I brought both. I love my iPad, but it just brings those things in. I don't trust, I don't trust the iPad.
Wonderful, you're doing that.
I really, if the technology's there, they should be able to do it. It's just that should part.
Maybe it was like Maestro.
Okay, welcome everybody. We're back after our closed session and at this time, we'd like to hear the actions taken in closed session to be read by our clerk, trustee Milchacher.
Yes, thank you. First, on a six to zero vote with trustee Fuentes absent, the board approved a general unpaid leave for, for three months with benefits for a classified employee. And then again, on a six to zero vote with trustee Fuentes absent, the board approved a general unpaid leave for three months with benefits for a classified employee. And that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And if you would all please rise, trustee Lang will lead us into invocation to be followed by trustee Milchacher leading us in the pledge.
Yes, please join me as we ask for blessings in helping us make the wisest possible decisions on behalf of all of the constituents of the South Orange County Community College District. And please look after all of us. Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we have some resolutions to be presented tonight, so I ask our presidents of our two colleges to help us do that. And Irvine Valley, could you come to the podium?
That's the only one for Irvine. These are all five.
This is the Irvine Valley College Military Friendly School Designation two thousand and twelve. This is very exciting. I'll read the resolution first and then we'll vote on it. Whereas Irvine Valley College has been officially designated as a military friendly school. One of a prestigious list of a thousand colleges, universities, and trade schools to be designated nationwide. And whereas Irvine Valley College received this distinction for being among the elite schools in the nation to offer active servicemen, members, veterans, and military spouses the best education, best value, and most welcoming atmosphere among seven thousand academic choices. That's the best among seven thousand choices. Whereas IVC is now listed in the Military Friendly Schools Guide and websites which help veterans and military service members to narrow their field of choices and to select the colleges that best meet their unique needs. And whereas Irvine Valley College will have the ability to use the Military Friendly Schools logo on its recruitment efforts, which is valued by veterans and service members because it indicates that a designated school appreciates military experience and expertise. And whereas Irvine Valley College new status as a military friendly campus reflects the dedicated faculty and staff who work with IVC's growing number of student vets, right now over five hundred strong, who play an increasing vital role in campus life and college activities. Therefore, be it resolved that the trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Irvine Valley College for attaining an official Military Friendly Schools designation by the G.I. Jobs Military Friendly Schools team and the Military Friendly Schools Academic Advisory Panel. Congratulations. This is very exciting.
We all have the roll read, please, for the vote.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Milchacher.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Burke.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Congratulations. President Rockmore, would you introduce the people who are at the podium, please?
Yes, I sure would. And first of all, I'd like to thank the chancellor and the trustees for, for this resolution. We're quite proud of what we've accomplished here. And to introduce who we have here, I have Daryl Cox, our director of financial aid and the lead of our Veterans Affairs Office to do introductions.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. The veterans have worked hard to establish a campus community that's welcoming and have invited their, their friends and cohorts to join us at IVC and they're coming. Every day, our population continues to grow. I've brought some veterans and some folks along with us tonight. I would like to introduce them to you. They make a significant difference on campus as it relates to the veterans' population. First up Ezekiel Hall. Ezekiel is our veterans coordinator in, in the certification process. All veterans passing through IVC have their educational benefits certified by his work. He's taken that program, cleaned it up, made it efficient and effective. The veterans trust him. They've, he has endeared himself to them and they support him immensely. Second up, Robert Melendez, our counselor who helps us with the veteran academic plans. It's a tremendous resource for us to have a academic counselor onboard who understands the profile of the academic plan that the veterans must have written up and adhere to. Robert is a tremendous resource. Next up are the veterans themselves. I have to start with the Marines. It's just the way it is. First up, Chris Husman, psychology major on his way to UCI. Second up, who is second up? Will Colbert. He's a business econ major. He's also the president of the transfer club on campus, doing a great job in that role.
I'm sorry, is he also a Marine or?
He is also a Marine.
Okay.
Moving to the Army, we have Ruben Malaro. Ruben is breaking ground on a recycling program for the campus and doing great work on that. So these are just a few of the veterans that we have. They're all engaging the campus in positive ways, making a difference and helping other vets along the way. They tutor each other, they support each other, they rib each other and threaten each other occasionally. But it's a good group. It's a pleasure to work with them and we're pleased of this designation as a military friendly campus. We thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
And this is a plaque that we received from the organization. I just wanted to show that to you. I'll not read it. It repeats much of what's in your resolution. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll get a photo op here, please. Okay, great. And now Saddleback College president, if you would come forward. We have the president's award for leadership and innovation. President Burnett.
So President Burnett, would you like to invite the people forward also that you are honoring?
I would love to invite them up. Do you want me to name their names right now?
Well, I'll read the resolution first and then, then you could read their names. How about that? Is that okay?
Sounds good to me.
Okay, thanks. Whereas Saddleback College president, then everybody knows what, what, everything about them, so, so then they'll know who they are, okay? But you can, they can come forward now, okay? Why don't you introduce them first, okay? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, first, we're very pleased. Our full-time faculty member of the year is Claire, Professor Claire Cesario Silva. Our associate faculty member who is, was given it posthumously and unfortunately couldn't be here because he passed away recently is Joe Tenervia. And our classified staff member is Janet Jacobs, over here. Our administrator of the year is Dr. Don Boucher. And our classified manager of the year, Jenny McHugh, who you all know.
Yes, well, thank you. They're all wonderful people. I know them all. Whereas Saddleback College president Todd A. Burnett announced five recipients of the two thousand and eleven president's award for leadership and innovation to recognize faculty, staff, and management who have demonstrated leadership and innovation throughout the year. And whereas faculty recipient Claire Cesario Silva, professor of anthropology, has shown exemplary leadership in the college's accreditation process, distance education, and student learning outcomes, and led the development of the college's educational planning and assessment committee. And associate faculty recipient Joe Tenervia, a former, former business instructor, demonstrated dedication, leadership, and innovation through his tutoring and mentoring efforts as an editor of the college's accreditation self-study and therefore has been awarded the award posthumously. And whereas administrator recipient Don Boucher, acting vice president for instruction, made significant contributions to Saddleback College's accreditation self-study and follow-up report and demonstrated tremendous leadership in enrollment, in enrollment manage and student success. That's very important also. Whereas management recipient Jenny McHugh, director of public information and marketing, exhibited outstanding leadership and innovation as she successfully managed an award-winning team, developed a communications and graphics manual, and played a key role in implementing many of the strategic plans and goals and strategies in marketing of the college. Whereas classified staff recipient Janet Jacobs, senior administrative assistant in health science and human services, was instrumental in streamlining the application process for nursing students and in developing the nursing database with district IT to track current and past nursing students and is a resource throughout the division for helpfulness and friendly demeanor. And as you know, our nursing program is number one in the nation. So, and therefore, be it resolved that the board of trustees and the chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Claire Cesario Silva, Joe Tenervia, Don Boucher, Jenny McHugh, and Janet Jacobs for their outstanding leadership and well-deserved recognition by President Burnett as recipients of the two thousand and eleven president's award for leadership and innovation. Congratulations to all of you.
Call the roll, please, for vote.
Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Lang.
Aye.
Trustee Meldow.
Aye.
Trustee Milchacher.
Aye.
Trustee Pat Burke.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Student trustee Larson.
Aye.
Great, congratulations.
Well, Madam President, trustees, and chancellor, I want to thank you very much for recognizing our, this year's recipients of these leadership and innovation awards. A little bit of background, we started them about three years ago. These are all nominated by their colleagues, just to let you know. And then were chosen out of a phenomenal group of people that were nominated through this past year. So, as you can see, they're more than deserving and we appreciate and thank you for the great jobs that you guys do, not only this last year, but obviously every day and going forward as well. So, thank you very much. Do anybody want to say anything? Anybody? Don, look at Don wants to. You're itching too.
No, I'm not.
Okay, once, alrighty then. Thank you all very much.
Okay, very good. And we are now at our public comments section. So I have two people who've asked to speak. Anna Maria Cobos, would you come forward, please?
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Anna Maria Cobos. I'm one of the librarians here and currently library department chair. I'm speaking in support of the academic senate and ASG resolutions regarding the name of Saddleback's renovated library building. In the fall, hopefully, when we move back to the library, we, the students, the faculty and staff, will be returning to what will be really a new building. I mean, we know that the, the outside will still be the same, but the inside will be entirely new. The state-of-the-art learning and technology hub represents the future. Let's embrace it by naming the building Saddleback College Library and Learning Resource Center. Let's look to the future and not the past. Thanks for your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much. And Joseph Asine and Shereen Abram have asked to speak. Do you want to speak together or separately?
Together.
Okay, go ahead.
For those of you I haven't gotten a chance to work with yet, my name's Joseph Asine. I'm the president of Saddleback College's Associate Student Government.
Hello, my name is Shereen Ibrahim. I am the chair of diversity, student council, and Saddleback's Associate Student Government.
We're here today representing our constituents, the Saddleback College students, in an issue that's been brought forth to us by many students over the past few months. UCLA has John Wooden, their treasured basketball coach that became an immense inspiration to all students. Boston University has Martin Luther King Jr., a graduate of the university and promoter of peace throughout the world. Saddleback College has Ronald Reagan, a man considered by many to be a great American president, and one other individual. Here on our campus, we have the James B. Utte Library. Who is James Boyd Utte, you may, you may ask? Utte was a congressman from California who voted against the Civil Rights Acts of nineteen sixty, nineteen sixty-four, and nineteen sixty-eight, as well as the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. In nineteen sixty-three, Utte went as far as stating that a large contingent of barefooted Africans might be training in Georgia to take over the US. Although James B. Utte was a product of the community college system, and although he donated a portion of the Saddleback College Library's original collection, his moral beliefs and his political ideals stand in stark contrast to the values and the morals that Saddleback College represents. Utte's presence on our campus in any way gives the impression that Saddleback College does not support diversity, that it is not a campus that promotes personal growth and development for its students. As a Saddleback College student, I take pride in our campus. I believe that this college creates leaders and I believe that this college promotes diversity and understanding with its students, faculty, and staff. James B. Utte is not an accurate representation of our students, our college, or our values, and our campus, in my opinion, should not bear his name. And you'll see the ASG and academic senate have taken the same standpoint on that. I encourage the, I encourage the board to consider renaming the library when it reopens this spring. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We're now at board reports, so I'll start with trustee Jay. Believe you're on. Push your button.
Good, yeah, thank you. Yeah, just one comment. Happy New Year and glad to be back and be vertical for a while. So, I thank you all for all of the cards and the sympathy letters and so forth, and we hope to have a pleasant rest of the year.
Thank you. Trustee Meldow.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to take a personal moment to say that my daughter Anna is here with us tonight. Anna, would you stand up for a second, say hi?
No, 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 you have to stand up. You can't just sit. We have to see you.
She's turning beet red now, yes.
Thank you, welcome, welcome.
I would also like to welcome trustee Jay back. It's very good to have him next to me again. That's very comforting to know that he's here, so. Then some other things that are going to keep me busy over the next few weeks. First of all, I'm looking forward to the Saddleback Foundation Board meeting on Thursday with President Burnett. And I'm looking also forward to the president's cup basketball game on the second. And I'm having a hard time deciding how I'm going to root. I mean, how, how do I split my time up? Secondly, next, also I will be at the Freedom Foundation Award for the Veterans Memorial here on Saddleback campus. And I'm also looking really a lot forward to going to the Outstanding Inventions Program at IVC. That's a fun thing. I did it last year. It was really great. And last, President Pat Burke and I attended the redistricting meeting for the Orange County Board of Education where they accepted the redistricting proposal, and we're just moving forward with that, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trust, trustee Milchacher?
Yeah, thank you. And I also welcome trustee Jay back and we're delighted to have you back again, so, we missed you. I attended an Understanding the Budget Workshop at Saddleback College. That was really extraordinary. It was put on by Deborah Fitzsimmons, who's our new vice chancellor of fiscal services, and she's just doing an incredible job. And our college fiscal manager, Carol Hilton, I don't, I don't see her right now, but, and several other people. And it was, first, they explained the budget situation of the, the district, and then they, and then Carol went on to explain the budget situation of the college. And you could find this online and soon they'll be putting up the, the video of the whole presentation and I would recommend everyone watching it. Now, we have, we have a packet of information this big to read, so this next month, I'll be very busy reading all of it about our budget situation at both colleges. It's very complex and we're, 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 we're doing great compared to many of the other colleges. I'm, I'm just very pleased. It's not easy because it's very, very tough times, but, but we have really good people. We hire the best and they're, they're doing a great job with the monies that they have, so I'm delighted. There was also a budget workshop the day before for Irvine Valley College, and I didn't attend that, but that one also is, is online and you could actually watch a video presentation of that. And I plan to do that because I, the, the, the presentation of the colleges was different. The presentation of the district was the same, so I'd like to, to see how the Irvine Valley College budget is, is faring. So I recommend this to all of our viewers, that they, they watch these videos so they could really help, help them understand the, the budget and thank our staff for putting it on to help all of us.
Thank you very much. Trustee Prendergast.
Yes, it seems hard to believe, but since our last meeting, I'm still going back to the holidays and I did get to attend the staff holiday event at IVC. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to make the Saddleback one, but, you know, teaching gets in the way sometimes. But my understanding is there is a photo out there somewhere of myself wearing antlers. I hope that doesn't surface anywhere.
It's on YouTube already.
Yeah. Also was able to attend the, the intercession barbecue at IVC. The timing was such that I was able to make that. That was nice to see Glenn behind the barbecue cooking up a storm there with his nice little apron. And then president's cup, the first game, yes, there was a game already. Some of you may not have known because I was the only one there. Saddleback won in triple overtime in the men's game. I stayed as long as I could for the women's game. I had to leave at halftime. My understanding is they came back and won. IVC was up at half, but did not prevail. So, so far, it's two, zero. Is that how that works?
Right.
And then, of course, this weekend, we have the invention convention, which will be my first time attending without either of my daughters actually having a project in it, so I'll get to just be observing completely unbiased, yes. Not that it mattered last year. Anyway, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Well, for those of you who don't know, the president's cup is a competition between Saddleback and Irvine Valley College basketball. And I unfortunately missed the one held at Irvine. There will be one held at Saddleback, and we've got a couple of different dates floating around out there. I believe it's February third. President Burnett?
It is February third.
Good.
Five thirty tip-off.
Okay, great. And this is very nice because the Saddleback coaches are trying to support coaches against cancer and the Max D. Pavova Recovery Fund. So, that, that's important. The other thing I want to just recognize is that the academic senate gave to SOC CD Services a plaque honoring their two thousand and eleven accreditation report, and that's from the Saddleback College Academic Senate. Very nice plaque and we appreciate that very much. Thank you. I'm sure the district does. Okay, I have also attended, as trustee Meldow mentioned, the Orange County Education Board meeting last Tuesday on our trustee area boundaries and the redistricting, and they approved the plan that we approved as a board. So that's good news. Also, the IVC Astounding Inventions is this Saturday, and I plan to go to that. Our student trustee, Jordan, and I will be at the Laguna Woods TV this Wednesday reporting on what happens here tonight. So with that, that's my report. Okay, and we'll go to trustee Lang.
Thank you. I'd also like to wish everybody a very happy new year and hope that two thousand and twelve will be a good one for all of us. I wasn't aware of trustee Jay's health travails, but certainly glad to see him up and around again and, and back in his seat over there. Just a couple of comments that I wanted to share. There's a lot of information that's been out there in some editorials that are, that have been written dealing with the issue of community college access, dealing with the emphasis on the various areas that, or very, various constituencies that we serve, and whether there should be some priority between and among those constituencies. Obviously, all of this really is driven by this, the student success, you know, mandate that we have. And I think, obviously, we'll need to, I think, spend more time on a lot of these areas as, as a board, talking about that. I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that from our colleges as we get additional information that comes down from the state community college governance board. I, I do want to, I guess, assure some of the, the core constituencies that we serve and particularly, I'm thinking now of our meritist program and community education programs, and I would hate to see and will be much opposed, I think, to any sort of emphasis that will not allow us to adequately serve that constituency. There may well be some, you know, ways that we need to address that in terms of the fee structure, programs, and so forth and so on. But I think that's an important group to us, to both our colleges, particularly to Saddleback College, I think. And, you know, I think it's something that we're certainly going to be faced with in the future. And, you know, again, I'm looking forward to having those discussions. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our chancellor's report. Oh, I'm sorry, student trustee. I didn't mean to slight you there, Jordan. Go ahead.
Thank you. All right, first of all, I'd like to also welcome everyone to a happy two thousand and twelve new year. Just one comment I have on the new semester, this is my eighth semester at Saddleback, is that this is the first year that I am required to purchase a textbook for my class. Believe it or not, I've gone through seven semesters without buying one. Believe it or not, I've gone through seven semesters without buying one textbook, and I've managed to acquire higher than a 3.3 GPA. Again, this is the only semester I'm required to buy a $180 textbook. Normally, I go to the library and rent the textbook, something that a lot of students also do. And with this time, I'd just like to ask the board and anyone who can help to enable books to be rented, such as this $180 textbook, to be rented in the library. And that would help, a lot of students help. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. Chancellor Porter.
The two areas that I was going to discuss have already been covered by trustees. Just a little bit of information in addition to what was said. One has to do with the redistricting approval from the Orange County Committee on School District Organization. The only step that's left, just so that you know, is that after the county board met, then it is forwarded to the registrar of voters and the county surveyor. Then they do their work, recorded, I guess, and then everything is official. But all of the approvals that are needed for this action have not been completed. On Student Success Task Force, as trustee Lang said, we'll wait to see what this means to us. We don't know yet. There's, we have work that has to be done by the legislature to determine what part they're going to approve. There are some regulations that the State Board of Governors will have to approve. And then, it'll be up to us to respond to the requirements that we have. But there's no question that there's going to be a serious change the way the California Community Colleges operate and the priorities of our system at the end of this year. So, we have every intention of reacting just the way that the Board of Governors would wish us to.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next item is Board Request for Reports. Do I have any board members requesting a report? Seeing none, we'll move on to item four, which is discussion item, and we have none. It's a placeholder, correct, chancellor? So, we're now at the Consent Calendar 5.0. Are there any agenda items we need to advance before that? Apparently not. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar. Does anyone want to pull an item from the consent calendar?
I'm approving the second.
Second?
Okay. And it, well, maybe that we want to ask trustee Jay to abstain from 5.9, since it relates to him, so I'll recommend that we pull 5.9 from the consent calendar. Okay? So, we have a second, all right, for that. So, everyone, we don't really have to vote on pulling an item. But do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus 5.9?
Dave, give me a second.
Okay. Trustee Lang made the motion, and trustee Pendergast seconded it. So, let's vote on the consent calendar with the exception of 5.9. Everyone vote? Okay. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and trustee Jay. Okay, no, you're right. Okay. Next, we'll vote on 5.9. Okay? All right. All right. Okay. Let's see. We're still missing trustee Lang and trustee Jay. You need to push your abstaining button.
There we go.
Okay. So, that matter carries with one abstention, one trustee absent, and one student advisory. Yes, vote. All right. We are now at items, the general action items, which are starting with 6.1. And the first one is college service areas. I'll let our chancellor present this item.
This item and the one following it are two of a series of board actions that we've requested in order to define the development of ATEP. These two are important, because they answer the questions of, is ATEP within any particular service area? And secondly, given that on the ATEP campus, is there any designation of what geographical parts of the ATEP campus is going to belong to which college? Last spring, this is regard to 6.1, last spring, there was quite a bit of discussion around the district about, is there such a thing as a boundary line that would define the service areas? And it was brought up that El Toro Road would be the, is the historical boundary line. And there's a map in front of you. You can see this sort of heavily penciled line here that goes from Majeska Canyon down El Toro Road, down to, I think it says there, Victoria Beach, through Wood Canyon in Laguna Beach. Some research was done, and it was determined that, yes, indeed, there was a service area, that the board defined that in 1985, when Irvine Valley College was approved to be a college. And the trustees at that time recognized the fact that there could be disagreements between the colleges in the future if some definition wasn't made. So, they did that by board action. It is interesting, in their board action, they even mentioned that as time goes on, personnel changes, board member changes, and people probably wouldn't remember that anything was done. And lo and behold, that happened to some degree. This is important, because the second part of concern was, well, if there is a service area line, and Irvine Valley College services north of this line, the El Toro, let's call it the El Toro Road line, does ATEP then belong to Irvine Valley College? And what this agenda item does is to reaffirm the traditional service area line, and then state that ATEP, though, is not included in this definition. And indeed, when the board originally approved this line, there was no ATEP. It was the Marine Corps Station there. And so, the board acquired the property at ATEP with the intention of both colleges using that site for career technical education. So, this is then an item that reaffirms the service area, and says that ATEP, although it's north of El Toro Road, is not part of just the Irvine Valley College service area. So, that's 6.1. You probably want to act on that first.
Yeah, I think we should go to that before you discuss. I see that we have trustee Pendergast wishing to speak. I'll get to you in just a moment. Your governorspeople as well. Go ahead, trustee Pendergast.
Just a quick question. I'm not sure if I'm confusing things here, but was there not something in accreditation that basically kind of mandates that they can't be part of? Like, it has to be kind of its own separate entity? Was that something I read somewhere about its function?
No, I've never seen anything like that. There certainly was an issue concerning, can the district operate ATEP and the instructional programs of ATEP? And accreditation made a strong statement, saying, no, the district may not, that the curriculum of a college can only be determined by the college. Then there's a question of, can there be two colleges in one center? Let's say that this property eventually turns into one or more centers. Can you have two colleges in one center? And we determined that the answer to that is no. This action doesn't have anything to do with asking for a center. We're a long way from that. This just states that both colleges can be there. The curriculum that's offered by each college would be determined by each college.
I'm approving.
Okay. Thank you, trustee Jay. And do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. And Lisa Davis Allen from IVC Academic Senate would like to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I have received concerns from the IVC.
I'm sorry. Could you speak into the mic? We aren't hearing you at all.
Can you hear me better?
Yes.
There we go. As Senate President, I have received concerns from the IVC faculty over the proposed configuration of the service area for ATEP. They have concerns, they have questions, that they feel like they have not had the opportunity to vet and get clarification on, in terms of future growth, programs available to us at that site, as well as precedents that are set. So, I'm requesting of the board that we delay this item for one month, to give the Senate the opportunity, and myself the opportunity, to get that clarification and find those answers for the concerned faculty, so that I can better determine their voice in this matter. Please.
Well, I think I understand what you're asking. However, this is not dealing with programs. It's merely saying that the 75 or some acres, 60 acres, it started out to be, much more than 60 acres, is going to be divided up. And then, the programs will be up to each college for that particular section. So, I don't see that that would be a big problem.
The faculty also has concerns about the site configuration inside the overall larger site, I mean, service area configurations inside the larger service area of IVC that is north of El Toro Road.
So, you're objecting to approving the service area, not specifically the ATEP division? Is that correct?
Specifically, the ATEP division inside the larger service area north of El Toro Road for IVC.
Okay.
And I'm asking that we simply delay this.
Okay.
One month in order to give the Academic Senate the opportunity to gain those clarifications and address those concerns of the IVC faculty.
Okay. We hear you. And do we have any trustee Pendergast?
Just, would that be a great difficulty, Gary, if we did that? Is that gonna?
Pardon me?
I'm just asking, Gary, if that, if we did that, what impact would that have?
Most likely, one month wouldn't matter, unless it has an impact on the work that's being done on new market tax credits. Now, here's the issue, the reason that we've been trying to move along in a deliberate way, is that in order for them to market the new market tax credit funding for us, there has to be a program design. Right now, and in order to do that, we have to state, who has, who's going to have programs here, and what are those programs going to be? So, will a month make a difference? I really don't know.
We're hearing from our vice chancellor, Deborah Fitzsimmons. Please.
A month would make a difference, actually. We're on a very tight timeframe. We need to show the elocities, prospective elocities, that are, for us to obtain the new market tax credit funding, we have to show progress. And we're already behind the dime, in the sense that we aren't showing enough progress. We need to be able to engage the designers and show that we're making progress to getting up to shovel-ready, so that when they're ready to commit, they're going to choose us over other potential sites. So, one month will make a difference in our, we already had a very tight timeline. This needed to be sort of done this month for us to move forward. I mean, of course, it's up to the board to make a decision, but it could jeopardize our funding.
Okay. I know our chancellor wants to speak, and I have other trustees wishing to speak. Go ahead, chancellor.
On item 6.1, I don't think timing makes much difference.
Go ahead.
And the reason is, there's only one central question here. And that question is, as we develop out ATEP, is it going to be used for one colleges, one college or two colleges? That's the only question. What was the board's intent when we acquired ATEP? And was it to be used only by one college? Were we looking for 68 acres to add to the space inventory of Irvine Valley College? I'd say the answer to that is no. But I think that's a decision you have to make with regard to this item.
Okay. I know that trustee Pendergast wants to speak, but I'm going to chime in here, because he's already had a turn. I don't believe that we ever had the intention that that whole acreage would go to the Northern College. It's certainly unfair. If that's what your faculty is concerned about, I mean, the program that you're going to be able to develop is going to be up to the college, of course, working with the district. And it would be very, very unfair to have all of that acreage be controlled by one college. So, I would support moving forward, but I will, of course, defer to the rest of the board. Trustee Pendergast, and then trustee Lang.
I was just going to say, we've got pretty clear presentations on Saddleback's plan on using it, and IVC's plan on using it, and that's been more than a month. I'm not really sure what it is the Senate, Academic Senate, needs to look at further to delay this. And again, just listening and understanding this, they don't seem to be related.
Right.
So, I'm not really clear what it is they're wanting to look at.
Do you want to respond to that, Ms. Allen?
Yes. Primarily, what I'm asking is just the one-month delay, because I have received concerns from IVC faculty. And with those concerns, as they're representative, I'm asking you that the governance group be given time, particularly because we will become such primary players in this role in the development of courses and programs, that they have the opportunity to get clarification on how that specific service area inside ATEP will effectively, or create problems for the larger service area at IVC. And all I'm asking is that I have the opportunity, because they have just recently come with those questions, that I do have the opportunity to clarify for them and get any response that they feel or deem necessary.
Okay. I don't hear you saying anything about the type of concerns. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I guess I'm also a little confused, I guess, as to why Academic Senate needs more time to vet this issue. It seems to me that this has been really a longstanding issue within the district, that, you know, I realize that there are a lot of politics involved, with internal politics involved with this issue. But I think what we're basically, what the chancellor's asking us for with respect to this recommendation, is to just clarify that this is a site that both colleges would be participating in programmatically. And I just can't understand how the feedback that you're going to get within a month would change that recommendation. Maybe you can help me, inform me about some of the early feedback that you've received that would, that might affect that recommendation.
Well, I think, for instance, you know, myself, I've been involved with the development of the program presentations, both for the chancellor and for the board. But specifically, for instance, the Saddleback Senate had not been made aware of the specificity of their programs until, I believe Dan said it was December, before he was aware of a lot of the specifics in their program proposals. And so, although I personally have been involved with the development of the programs that are proposed for IVC, that has not been shared out through the Senate, much like it had not been shared out through the Saddleback Senate. And so, although this may be a topic that, for many of us in this room, is an older topic, and we've discussed it and had a lot of time to vet it and discuss it, that hasn't necessarily been the case for the faculty at large at either of the institutions through the academic senates. And so, there are a number of faculty that are not as aware of service areas and plans for programs to be proposed out there as they would like to be. And so, they have come to me in the recent days, asking me if there was a possibility, once the item was placed on here, that it be held up for one month, so that we could get more information to the faculty at large through the academic senate.
Well, I'd just like to respond to that, Ms. Allen. This has been on the agenda repeatedly for many board meetings. And if the faculty members who are speaking to you haven't paid attention to those agenda items, they have some responsibility in that. We do need to move forward. I would support doing that tonight. There isn't anything dramatic that's going to negatively impact either college. This is just simply making and defining certain areas. Trustee, we have a motion by trustee Jay. Do I have a second?
It's been moved in seconds.
It's moved in seconds by Marsha. Oh, sorry, trustee Melchecker. Okay. Any other? Meldow, trustee Meldow.
Yes, I'd just like to say that the board would have an interest in making sure that both campuses had access to the advanced technology idea, and that they would come up with programs that probably should be based up with programs that probably should be based in that kind of facility. Also, we don't even have a final configuration on the land yet. And I think that we're, all we're asking in this situation is that we agree that there is an interest in having both colleges have access to the land and the programs there.
Yes. Any other trustees wishing to speak? Okay. Seeing none, I'll ask for the vote on the item, please. Okay. Matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. We'll now move to 6.2. Have the Chancellor present that.
Okay. After the passage of 6.1, the next question is, how will each college participate in the ATEP property? And before you is a little depiction of, of the property. And you'll see the, the pink line that runs through the campus, that's what's known as LIFOC, Lease Infurtherance of Conveyance, forgetting all the legalese. What it means is, is that we don't own the property below that pink line, as you're looking at it, in fee as yet. It will happen soon, we're told, but we've been told soon for years. And so we're waiting for that to happen. It takes approval by Water Quality Board? Someone out there? Is, is that right? I think the Navy has, they're done with it. And now it's at the, whatever region we're in of the Water Quality to review and agree, and they haven't done that yet. Okay. That being said, as we were trying to figure out, how would each college use that, in the short run, we thought we should try to avoid any land that's, that we couldn't build on. So we asked our planners to configure the property so that each college would have an equal amount of property. Now, to put this in perspective, we're talking about a total build-out that, that we'll be able to have roughly between 900,001.7 million square feet. That's more, far more square footage than we have right now with our two colleges, by a lot. There is so much eligibility for space here, that we shouldn't even be talking about whether, you know, one college needs the whole thing. So I personally think that splitting in, in half is very fair. What you see here is what the planners have given us as ideas. As you can see, they're tucked up close to Red Hill for the purpose of the LIFOC. And I think they're equally as good. Each, I, it'd be hard to decide which one you want, because they're both desirable. And between the two college presidents, who themselves had a hard time because they thought they were equal also. If I only came to the conclusion, Saddleback thought they had a little preference for the building, the site you see with the sort of pinkish building, and IVC with the bluish one. I guess Saddleback is actually red, not pink, right? Yeah. So, in this agenda item, all we're saying is, Irvine Valley College, do you have a place at IVC, at ATEP? Yes, there it is, right there. We designate this for you now, initially. And this doesn't mean at all that it can't be changed in the future. Who knows? And we're in the infant stage of development at this site. Things may change a lot as we move along, and future boards will, will change the configuration of what, the way it's developed. But it seems to me, I mean, you can tell already, just by the, the statements that we've just heard, that, that not everybody's in agreement. Well, as long as everyone's not in agreement, we can't go anywhere. So at some point, we just have to act. And if we find later that it, the decision could have been slightly better, we can always go back and revise that. I recommend that you approve this item, 6.2.
Okay. So 6.2, as I understand it, only deals with this 3.25 acres each.
Yes.
Yeah. And then the other, for future development, will be determined at some later time, of which we have talked frequently about private partnerships. And so everyone understands that. Moved by trustee J, and seconded by trustee Melchiker. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I've got a little bigger problem with this recommendation than I do with the last one. And it really revolves around this Exhibit B concept, I guess. And that is, that it's very likely, for example, that we're going to have, you know, one, rather than two buildings built at the same time, perhaps only one building, you know, this is going to be a stage development type of situation. So the idea of designating a Saddleback building and an IVC building, when we're basically saying that this is intended to be a cooperative venture, gives me some concern. There's certainly no reason that we, well, no reason that I'm aware of, at least, that we couldn't have one building in which there are maybe floors, I think we had talked about that, that, on which IVC would be conducting classes, floors that Saddleback would be conducting classes. So this one gives me a little bit more problem, I guess.
Well, we do actually have a building now, and I believe that building would be located on what's designated in this exhibit as the IVC site. Is that correct, Chancellor?
That's not correct.
I, I don't know. I want to ask.
The current temporary campus, if our negotiations with the city continue the way they are, would, would go to the city, and the programs that are in that building would currently, what the configuration is, would be offered by Irvine Valley College, and it would be in the, the property where you see the blue coloring. Now, the, the one difference, I think I need the planners, of which there's a couple of them back here, the use within the buildings is much different. The proposal by Saddleback for Allied Health has a much different use configuration than some of the laboratories that would be used in, in the programs from IVC. So it'd be harder to, to share. And I know trustee Lang mentioned, well, maybe floors, and, and that possibly could be done. But it wouldn't be able to be jointly used, say, in the same semester. You'd have to redo the room in order to, to let the other college put their programs in there. Is, is that what you had in mind, or are you mainly just interested in putting it all in one building for efficiency or something?
I'm mainly interested in leaving our options open here, and not be bound by any sort of a map like this. But see who's, you know, who's got the best ideas and plans for programs, and that's what ought to dictate, you know, what sort of configuration that we have.
Well, my understanding of the item is that we're just talking about areas, and that we're not talking about buildings. Anything to be built will have to come back to us. And that's-
Right. But we're, but, but the recommendation specifically references Exhibit B. It represents, Exhibit B is a concept plan for the site, and that I have a problem with.
Okay. Well, why don't, why don't you make an amendment to the motion?
I, I thought it was, I thought we were discussing the motion at the moment.
We are discussing it, but it's at the point of discussion that you can make an amendment, if you so desire.
Right.
Okay, I know. Trustee Melchiker's turn next. Trustee Melchiker.
Okay. The reason I felt it was important to move forward with this, these, these agenda items, is because we've been discussing ATEP for way too long.
Yes.
And, and when we did accreditation, we learned that ATEP cannot be run by the district, because the district cannot receive accreditation. Both colleges have to receive accreditation, so each college has to have their own particular programs on ATEP to be able to have these programs be accredited. So in some sense, we have to divide up the land to give Irvine Valley College a portion of the land, and Saddleback College a portion of the land. Now, these aren't set in stone, but, well, at all. I mean, we can change it next week, but I would like to just get started on it. It's time to, to start moving. And this will let us get started to obtain funding, obtain financing, which is, so we, we really need to obtain financing prior to building these, these things. And this will kind of force the two colleges, who aren't, both, both of the colleges aren't entirely happy with this configuration, but both aren't entirely unhappy with the configuration. So this will, in, in some sense, force both, both colleges to start planning for their particular area. And as long as they've agreed, each one of them has agreed on one particular area, I think we should just approve it and move forward with it, and let the colleges start planning. Let Irvine Valley College-
Thank you, trustee Melchiker. The Chancellor wants to chime in.
Okay, thank you.
Another thought, as we're discussing that, is that when we begin building the, this out, there's nothing that says that the first building couldn't be larger and couldn't be shared by the two colleges, and they could have an agreement, and one could, and they could even work out, as long as the spaces were clear, so that one college wouldn't bear the burden of the space inventory to hurt them for our building eligibility on their, on the regular campus. I think it isn't absolutely necessary that we have to build two buildings right away like this. But I think it's important to say, we're going to have two colleges, and there's a space for each college to be at. And how we go from here, I think, depends on funding, it depends on architectural planning. I think we have a lot of flexibility in what we do. But I think it's time that we just make a decision. We're going to do this, and both colleges will be part of it.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Pendergast.
Yeah, I think it's important, just for general purpose knowledge, that, that it would be, in the future, if one college or the other said, we have a need for 50,000 more square feet for this program, and the other college is like, isn't feeling old, now we have to find something to do 50,000 square feet with, that that's okay, that the two colleges mutually say, oh, if you've got that kind of program, do it. You know, there's plenty of space. This does not seem to me like it's going to be an issue of, we're, we're nickel and diming over the last 10,000 square feet on the, on the land. It, there's plenty of space. This is just getting the ball rolling, that each college has its opportunity to develop something. We've seen the presentation on what they plan to develop. They were very impressive presentations. I thought they were very well-done. And, and I assume that we will get presentations for new programs down the line. And if one has one and the other doesn't, then so be it.
And whatever is going to actually be built there will come back to us for approval. Okay, seeing no one else wishing-
Excuse me?
Trustee, sorry. Who wants to speak?
I do.
Trustee Melldow, I didn't see your, your light up here. Thank you. Go ahead, go ahead.
I think the idea of having the colleges split the land is good. I think we're putting the horse before the cart, though. I mean, we're talking about having to develop buildings, to develop curriculum, to decide how many students each college would want. There's a lot of work to go on between now and the time we start building. But it doesn't make a lot of sense to me, as most of the other members seem to believe, that we put it off any longer, that we have to get this program started. And having talked to faculty and staff at both colleges, one of the things that they seem fairly, fairly united on was the fact that the process had been taking way too long, and it was continuing to drag out. And I don't think that anything in the, in what we're asking for here is going to inhibit that process going forward. And I would suggest that maybe that's what we want to do, is just to approve this and get moving once again.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I also don't want to delay the project any further either. But on the other hand, I don't want to give wrong impressions by adopting something that I think may prove unrealistic down the road. So I guess I would ask the Chancellor, how important is this concept plan, Exhibit B, to the recommendation?
I guess it goes back to the same answer that we gave for 6.1. And that's that in order to proceed with funding new market tax credit, we have to, we have to be able to define, what is it that we plan to build there? Do we plan to build one building or two buildings? How big are the buildings? What kind of programs are you going to put into the buildings? And so if we, if we don't make a, a decision about that, then that's delaying the, the financing part of it.
Well, do the, all right, let me, let me, if I may, come back-
Go ahead.
And ask the question. We, first of all, is the new markets tax credit intended to cover the whole site, or just the non-LIFOC area?
Okay, I'll let our Vice Chancellor, Fitzsimmons, respond to that.
Right.
One question at a time.
So it would be the non-LIFOC area that's designated on the map above the red line. It would, we need to know approximately how many square foot that we're going to need to be, we need to, we're backing into this, basically, we want to go out for new market tax credits and financing, enough so we know that we're going to build X amount of square foot, and have the funding to do that. And so these two buildings, whether it's one or two, it really doesn't matter to us, but we need to have some kind of parameters so we can give directions to the consultants that are going and pursuing these funding. And the timeline is very, very, very tight for pursuing that funding. So do we, so basically, the question is, right now, we're talking about two buildings, but it could be one, but we're looking at approximately 30,000 square foot per campus. And so then we back into a cost, and then we know this is how much new market tax credits we're going to need, elquettes awarded for us, so we can then go ahead and get the appropriate funding that will support these-
Okay. Trustee Lang.
Building. So none of the previous configurations that we have looked at, relative to the planning on the site, are useful for the new markets tax credit proposals?
We need, we need to be able to provide specific detail enough that provides confidence to the people who are going to invest. And, and up to this point, we have, we don't have that.
Trustee J.
This seems to me, to me, the most flexible arrangement that we have. Now, you're talking about two buildings or one building. One building, parts of it could have programs assigned to one camp, one college, and parts of the same building could be signed to the other college. This is maximum flexibility, I believe, and I'm going to support this.
Okay. Any other trustees wishing to speak? Let's vote on the item. Trustee Lang?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. Carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. Now, we are at 6.3, which is the nomination of Board of Directors for CCCT. And do I have any board members wishing to make such nominations?
I, I-
Trustee Melchiker, go ahead. I recognize-
I was just going to ask if anybody would like to run for CCCT. I, I don't have time right now to do that, but are there any board members that would like this opportunity?
Okay. I don't see anyone from this board. Do you have someone from another area or board who wants to?
Okay, I guess this item's gonna just pass, then, right? All right, let's move on. We will not nominate anyone. 6.4, these are Board Policy Revisions for Acceptance for Review and Study, 6.4.
Move approval for Review and Study?
All right, moved by trustee J, seconded by trustee Melldow. Comments or questions before we vote on accepting this for Review and Study? Seeing none, let's vote on the item. Okay, matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. We are now at 6.5, which are sabbatical recommendations for 2012, 2013. Faculty sabbaticals. Any comments, questions?
I have, I have one comment.
Trustee Melchiker?
I, I read all the sabbatical proposals, and there's, there's 19 of them. And two people that, that are at the, were at the meeting, Lisa Allen Davis, who's, who's President of the Academic Senate, and also Anna Marie Kobos, who's our Head Librarian at Irvine Valley College, are taking sabbaticals. And it looks like they're fascinating subjects. So what I would like to do, they're, they're just leaving for one semester. They have the opportunity to leave for one semester or one year. So they're only leaving for one semester, so we thank them for that. And I'd, I'd like them to present briefly what they have accomplished on their sabbatical after- after, after the sabbatical is over. We've done that in the past, and it's been very.
I believe that's required, Trustee Melchick.
No, but I mean, I'd like them to present to the board, you know.
Well, no, but we can certainly ask them to do that, but it is required, I believe. Is that?
If they'd like to, I mean, they don't have to.
Okay. Trustee, or, I'm sorry, Mrs. Allen, do you want to comment?
Yes, it is part of the requirement, at the end of our sabbatical, to produce and present a summary on our work. I'm certain that if the board would have specific interest in one or more, that the faculty would be happy.
Well, I think it could be presented for all of them as an information item at the back of the agenda.
Absolutely.
That'd be great. I do hope that not all 19 are going to be leaving at the same time. I'm sure they're staggered, right?
There is some staggering.
Are we going to operate with all you gone?
You'll be just fine.
Hopefully, we will be. Okay, so, any comments?
Move approval.
Okay, it's moved by Trustee Melchick, and seconded by Trustee Penner-Gast. No other comments, let's vote on the item. Okay, matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. Okay, next is 6.6, Academic Personnel Actions, nothing to be changed by our Vice Chancellor.
I'd like to make one, pardon. One comment, I thought I would mention that the Dean of Mass Science and Engineering, James Wright, is retiring, and he came to us after he finished a very distinguished career in industry, and he decided he wanted to see if he could make a difference in post-secondary education, and indeed, he has, and we'll miss him, and we have more big shoes to fill now, so.
That's correct. All right. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I also want to do, I guess, wish Dean Wright all the very best in his retirement. He's done an absolutely terrific job for the college, and he will be sorely missed.
And I would certainly echo those comments. He's a marvelous individual. So, seeing no other, oh, Trustee Jay.
Well, yeah, I'd just like to say the same thing. Not only did he work in industry and work here for many years, he also was assigned to the Air Force Academy.
That's right.
And left the Air Force as a full Colonel, so he had that career going, too, so he will be sorely missed.
Highly accomplished, but we do have a habit of hiring our people out of retirement, so there is hope. There is hope. All right, let's vote on the item. Do we, we had a motion, a second, right?
Move approval, in case we haven't, I don't know.
And Penner-Gast seconded it, okay. Trustee Jay? All right, carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory yes vote. We're now at Classified Personnel Actions, no changes.
Move approval.
Trustee Melchick moves. Trustee Melldow seconds. Okay. Any comments? Trustee Jay, no, or is that from the last time? All right, matter carries unanimously with one trustee absent and one student advisory vote. We are now at Reports, and we will start with Irvine Valley College, Saddleback College speakers approving a request for speakers. Okay, this is not an action item, but it says it is, so what are we doing here? Chancellor. Information, okay, just a report, okay. Any questions or comments about this item, 7.1, speakers? Seeing none, okay, let's move to 7.2, which is a Basic Aid Report. Seeing no questions or comments, we'll move to 7.1. Did you have something, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons?
I just wanted to point out an enhanced feature of this report. If you took, if you look at the last page, at the bottom, there's a box that's in gray.
Right.
And so, what we did, first of all, is we tried to recap that section specifically showing all the changes to the Basic Aid Report that's done on a monthly basis compared to the previous month. And I also wanted to point out, so you could sort of really tell, because there's a lot of lines in this report, and it's cumulative, and there's a lot of projects, and it's really hard to see the changes, so we put that in the back underneath, so it shows all the changes. And I also wanted to point out that you can see a plus there, there's one project, which is legal fees, and we added to the Basic Aid pot since last month, because we did get our insurance claim for the Westfall case.
Thank you.
So, we added to that, so I wanted to point those two things out.
Great, great. Any comments or, okay, we'll move to 7.3, which is a Retiree Trust Fund. No comments or questions?
I just wanted to mention that as of today, as you can tell, the market goes up and down. You can see that the market value as of December was 61,922,567, but as of today, it went up $2 million, so it's now at 63,923,466. So, it just goes to show, you know, from, you know, from day to day, it really does go up and down.
Wonderful, thank you, that is good news. 7.4, Facilities Plan Status Report. Comments or questions? Okay, move to 7.5, Monthly Financial Status Report. Seeing no comments or questions, we're now at 7.3, and that's the Interfund Transfer of Cash, and we have a replacement page for that. Chancellor Porter, any comments about that, questions? Okay, so, we are now at 8.0, and this is written reports, as well as reports from our shared governance. So, we will start with.
Saddleback College Academic Senate.
College Academic Senate, thank you.
The following resolution regarding the naming of the Saddleback College Library was adopted by the Saddleback College Academic Senate in November of 2011. Whereas the James B. Ut Library is scheduled to reopen in late spring 2012, thus creating an opportunity to rename the library, reflecting its new functions and the college itself. And whereas the building was never officially named through any action by the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees, and whereas while in legislative office, James B. Ut repeatedly made disparaging relational remarks and voted against both the Civil Rights Act and the Voting Rights Act in contradiction to the stated Saddleback College values of collegiality and inclusiveness. Resolved that the Academic Senate recommends the Saddleback College Library building be no longer named the James B. Ut Library, and resolved that the Academic Senate recommends the renovated building be renamed the Saddleback College Library and Learning Center, and resolved that future attempts to rename the building follow procedures dictated by Board Policy 1500 and are consistent with Saddleback College values. I encourage the board to consider the renaming of the new Learning Center as an agenda item in the future. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and we will move to our unit representative.
I have no report this evening, thank you.
Oh, okay, great. And Lisa Davis-Sal, IVC.
Short report for the Academic Senate. A couple of things, of course, we're moving forward on the ACCJC SLO proficiency deadlines that have been handed to us, and we are preparing quite successfully, moving very forward, doing a lot of recording and assessing of collected data at this point. We also are in the midst of hiring, of course, and actively beginning our work in those search committees. We have two, one distinguished lecture that I'd like to detail for you, and one art gallery opening. On the 26th, this Thursday, at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center at IVC, we will be presenting a lecture by Celine Glan, who is a lecturer on French Culture, Art, and History for the Alliance Francais in Newport Beach, San Diego, and Dallas, Texas. She is a faculty member at Southern Methodist University, as well as a lecturer for the Dallas International School and Sustention Preparatory School there as well, where there is a large Sustention Monastic Group in the Dallas area. Her work will be titled Napoleon Bonaparte, Emperor of the French, and we invite you all to attend. Our Distinguished Academic Lecture Series is now in its second year, quite successful, and attendance continues to improve. I think we have some really good academic lectures in the series this year, and we also have some that we're working on for the following year. Finally, on February 2nd, the IVC Art Gallery's opening will be for Material Matters, which will be a large installation at that time, and we invite you all to be there from 6:00 to 8:00 PM for the opening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our Associate Vice Chancellor of Economic Development.
Thank you, good evening, respectfully submit my written report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And our IVC President, Lynn Rockmore.
Well, thank you very much. I, too, would like to welcome back Trustee Jay. It's good to see you, you look great. I had the opportunity to provide testimony in front of the Accreditation Commission, about 25 members or so. We chose to do this as part of process, presidents are allowed to testify before them. The college felt that giving a partially met, in terms of three of the recommendations, one having to do with district-wide strategic planning, one having to do with budget allocation process, and one with communication, didn't fully describe the efforts that took place. And in fact, since the teams had left and presented their report, there'd been a lot of work done that needed to be discussed as well. So, I would like to tell you that that occasion went very, very well. They give you all of five minutes to provide your testimony, and I think I took just under the five, but based on the smiles in the room, I think that the point was made successfully. I also thanked them for the process, obviously, it works. At the president's welcome, I can say our semester is starting up very, very smoothly, no problems as far as that I can report to you. I want to thank the chancellor for joining us that day for the welcoming and providing a welcome from the chancellor's office and the Board of Trustees. Also, as mentioned, thanking Trustee Penner-Gast and also President Padberg for attending our holiday event. I also have antlers on you, so I'll use that at the most appropriate time.
I was trying to ignore that.
And also, Trustee Penner-Gast for joining me at that barbecue, that very smoky occasion, but it was fun. On the president's cup, I would like to congratulate Saddleback College and Todd on your first two wins, and look out, because we're coming to take the next two, so we look forward to that. All right, that's my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we will now move to President Saddleback College, Todd Burnett.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, once again, welcome back, everybody. We've had an excellent first beginning of the semester. Would like to thank our Academic Senate for once again leading a tremendously successful In-Service Week, and thank you for those of you that did attend to the various activities. As President Rockmore mentioned, I also went up to San Francisco, and we met in front of the commission on behalf of Saddleback College, and got my five minutes of time, and once again tried to, or did bring forth additional information about the successful efforts on our accreditation and through the follow-up report, and once again, thank you to the board, thank you to the chancellor for your leadership and support in getting what I think was very successful in responding to those recommendations. I get to come and bear some wonderful news. I got one of the best news that I think I've had in probably in the last four years since I've been here. We hired a new financial aid director, Christian Alvarado, just last year, last summer, actually. We stole him from Mount SAC, I always like to say that, and fun, because I have a lot of friends over there. But the good part is, is that Christian just reported to us two weeks ago, or a week ago, that we have increased the amount of, or reduced the amount of time that we've brought and dispersed our financial aid to our students by five weeks this semester. When we talk about student success, as I always tell people, personal financial situation is the number one reason that students do not succeed. By getting our financial aid moved up by five weeks, probably saved many, many students or allowed our students to be successful. So, thank you to Christian, to the team, and to Vice President Juan Alvalos. I've been pleased, you know, we sent a couple of press releases, but I'd love to say to her publicly, for folks that are watching at home, Saddleback College had two wonderful contributions given to it. The first one recently was made by one of our founding faculty members, Linda Rice, who donated $140,000 endowment for scholarships for students that are in the education field and planning to do that. We're very appreciative and thrilled that Professor Rice had made that contribution and for that endowment. Next, you've probably heard about, and I do want to emphasize, an event coming up, but Saddleback College received its largest gift in its history. Over $1.6 million was donated by Dorothy Marie Lowry, who was one of our emeritus students. And she liked the college and appreciated the classes so much that she made this phenomenal contribution and set up an endowment to support our emeritus program and our programs for the adult population. On February 8th, and you're all invited, you have invitations up there in front of you, we will be honoring Ms. Lowry, her niece will be coming, as well as the trustee, and we will have about 350 emeritus students there. Hopefully, we'll be seeing you as well to give a day of honor and thanks and appreciation for that amazingly generous gift. That'll be at 2:30 at the Norman Murray Senior Center, and I encourage you to please RSVP if you're going to be attending. Thank you once again about the president's cup, we just love this tradition, and IVC won it last year, so we're hoping to steal it back, and we got a nice little start here, 2-0. But I think that happened once before, where it went the other way, so you can't always count on it, so. And we have a habit of beating each other at our other campuses, if you noticed that, too, it kind of goes back. Finally, we had somebody, some of the trustees had already mentioned, that on February 11th, Saddleback College is going to be honored to receive the George Washington Honor Award from the Freedoms Foundation, and I know you're all invited once again, hopefully you'll join us there to receive that wonderful honor. I believe Assemblywoman Diane Harky will be giving the honor to us, as well as a lot of other wonderful people to recognize. I did want to say something real quick, there were some comments made, it's been going around, to the trustees tonight, Trustee Melchick, Trustee Lang. Without a doubt, and to let the, we will be talking more about this in the future, Saddleback College is 100% committed to its emeritus program, we are 100% committed to providing educational opportunities and training for our older population, not only within our service territory, but elsewhere as well. We will, there was, I can't see anything that's coming down from the state through their recommendations or anything that would help or stop us from continuing to have a vibrant emeritus program, so we'll be talking more about that. I've already spoken with the faculty at the emeritus during In-Service Week, Director Sandy Marzilli, who's phenomenal, has also been out there talking. We'll be doing more out there, but please, I want to rest assured, everybody in our community, that Saddleback College will continue to provide a vibrant emeritus program. Some things may change, as Trustee Lang had mentioned, the way we do it, but we are still going to offer it, and we will do the best we can with contributions like Dorothy Marie Lowry, we will be able to keep the cost down in the future, if it ever gets to that point. So anyway, I just want to make those statements right now. Finally, we're looking forward to a healthy and prosperous 2012. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And Vice Chancellor Bravici of Technology.
No report.
All right, and Vice Chancellor Gay.
President Dan Walsh provided a plaque to District Services, which is a pretty incredible thing for college academics, and to recognize the partnership that we have, that was wonderful that we had that happen. Trustee Jay, welcome back. You look healthier than ever, you've lost weight, I do not recommend your methodology of dieting, though. This Saturday is the LA Job Fair, and for the third year in a row, we'll be recruiting more faculty than anybody else in the state of California.
Wow.
Which is a feather in our cap, but another positive thing is, this is a good partnership issue with the colleges. We have 10 faculty administrators coming to join us, because really, at the end of the day, the best recruiters isn't HR, it really is the faculty themselves to encourage others to follow their pathway, too, so that's a very positive thing happening this Saturday.
Great, wonderful. And Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons?
Just two quick things. The District Resource Allocation Committee, DRAC, did present two Understanding the Budget Workshops last week. They're really well attended, we held one at each of the campuses, and the comments and questions afterwards seemed very, very positive, so we're going to start making this a tradition on a regular basis. Also, if all goes well, our compromised draft of the administrative regulation that follows Board Policy 3110, which is for basic aid resource allocation, hopefully will be coming in the next board meeting for, even though the board doesn't approve administrative regs, obviously, that's a huge amount of money, and the board is very much interested in the process that would be recommended. So, we'll be making a presentation and discussing the administrative regulation, the process, and all the accompanying documents, so hopefully, that'll be coming in February. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Dennis Gordon, our IVC President of Academic Sen, or Classified, sorry.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that during Professional Development Week, we had a great workshop for our classified employees on campus safety and security, and what to do in case of an emergency or a hostile situation on campus. We had both of our, Liz Zipris, who's our Dean of Counseling, gave a great presentation, and also our police lieutenant also gave a wonderful presentation on what to do in case of a hostile situation, and how to deal with either, you know, someone who's incurred on campus in their situation, so our folks are very pleased. We're going to have another follow-up to that, it was fantastic for our people.
Great, great. Okay, and CSCA President, Janice Masrak.
Yes, good evening, everybody, and I'm happy to represent the CSCE employees of the district. And taking on this job is quite a big challenge to me, which I've found out. But it's, as I delve into it, it's quite structured, and there's a lot of valuable resources for me to defer to, thank God. And one of the things that I did find on the CSCE website was their Code of Ethics, which was adopted in 1954. And I'm going to share that with you because I feel that it is really important to try to convey the appropriate kind of mindset that we need to foster student success. And as a school employees who are in daily contact with many phases of educational work, should be persons whose conduct is beyond reproach and who sincerely believe in the advancement of education and the betterment of working conditions, therefore, the California School Employee Association proposes this Code of Ethics for standards for its members. As a school employee, I will be proud of my vocation in order that I may use my best endeavors to elevate the standards of my position so that I may merit a reputation for high quality of service to the end that others may emulate my example. Be a person of integrity, clean speech, desirable personal habits, and physical fitness. Be just in my criticism and generous in praise to improve and not destroy. At all times, be courteous in my relationships with pupils, parents, teachers, and others. Be a resourceful person who readily adapts to different kinds of work and change conditions and finds better ways of doing things. Conduct myself in a spirit of friendliness and helpfulness to my fellow employees to an end that I will consider no personal success legitimate or ethical, which is secured by taking advantage of another. Associate myself with employees of other districts for the purposes of discussing school problems and cooperating in the improvement of public school conditions. Always uphold my obligations as a citizen to my nation, my state, my school district, and my community, and give them unswerving loyalty. Always bear in mind that the purpose of CSCE is to promote the efficiency and raise the standards of all school employees, and that I shall be equally obligated to assist all of my fellow workers. This code here is something that I've used and counseled some employees with that have been in problematic situations, and it's my goal as a leader of this is to kind of get that shift gear and get people to start thinking that way. And we have a lot of fabulous employees here, and I hope that there's more in the future. The only thing that I've seen is a lot of, you know, positions getting cut and positions being cut down to 29 and a half hour weeks from a full-time position. And it's really, it causes people to get, you know, it undermines their commitment. And we hate to see that, because I hear these people, and they are suffering because they may have health problems and so forth, and no benefits. And, you know, I have a heart, and I listen to them to try to help them. So I hope we all can work together.
Thank you for that report. And Saddleback College Classified Senate President, Don Menel.
Well, welcome back, and welcome back, Dr. Jay. It's nice how you keep on getting the meeting moving, although Nancy did a great job while you were gone. Although our holidays seem short, you know, many students from all ages are returning back to school, and a higher stress than I've ever seen, really, especially in the use of labs and computers. They can't fix their own computers at home, or they can't even afford the internet access at home. So they're coming and using the facilities a lot more. So our computer labs have been used more than ever, especially this year. In the Understanding the Budget, I did see that we will have a carryover again this year. It's not as large as past years, but I hope we use that wisely. You see that a lot of people are leaving this school. People are separating and leaving and going to other jobs. Many of our classified holds more than one job. One person that's retiring in your board packet is Deadness Winch, and I don't know if I'm saying his last name right. He started out as landscaper here. He eventually, through staff development, improved a lot of his skills and actually is retiring as an irrigation specialist. He knows everything, especially in the use of making sure we're using our water appropriately. And I just want to applaud him because he has been here for, I believe, over 20 years, 25 years, way before I started at this place. So I just thank you, and congratulations to him.
All right, thank you so much. And our Associated Student Government President from Saddleback College, I don't see your name. Could you state it for us?
The vice president.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Joseph now has a class at this time, so thank you, Madam President.
And your name?
Austin DeSoto.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, and I also would like to point out to the board that the Associated Student Government of Saddleback adopted a similar resolution to that of the Academic Senate as it comes to the library. You'll see that they're identical, actually. This came, mostly our decision to pass the resolution came with a survey that was conducted by our Diversity Students Council that found that four in five students that took the survey thought that James B. Utte was not an appropriate name for our library. To reiterate, he was someone who thought that the US should leave the UN. He voted against the Civil Rights Act in 1916, 1964, and 1968, and the Voting Rights Act in 1965. He also claimed that a large contingent of barefooted Africans might be training in Georgia as part of the United Nations military exercise to take over the United States. And in 1963, he also claimed that black Africans will be, are training in Cuba to invade the United States. Our campus is one that definitely supports diversity, and we're also a campus that has a large contingency of minority students. So to have someone's name on a building here that's going to be standing tall is kind of the crown jewel of Saddleback's current architecture, as you could say, is kind of sending a message to our students that doesn't condone with the message I think we are trying to send and the message that stands with Saddleback's motto and mission statement. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a nice evening, everybody.